September nineteenth regularly scheduled, uh, City of Nacogdoches, uh, council meeting. Chad, will you lead us in prayer, please?
I will. Join with me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this day grateful, Lord, for all of your many blessings to us and to this great city, Lord. I thank you for our, our city, our residents, the city council, Lord. I thank you for our city staff. Grateful for all of the things that, that go on in the city and, and grateful for all those that make it happen, Lord. I ask that you be in our midst tonight, that we would have your countenance, Lord, and that we would make decisions that would be uh, honoring to you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Just then for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item on the agenda is open forum. Do we have any, Rhonda? Okay. It's me. Uh, I want to take this opportunity, uh, I wasn't here on the September twelfth meeting when we set the, uh, uh, tax rate, but the previous, uh, scheduling, scheduled, uh, council meeting, there was a vote taken on a tattoo parlor downtown and I misunderstood, um, the, uh, term, what is it, uh, super majority. And i- if you're on the ZBA and you have a super majority, it's four to one to overturn or whatever. So I was under the impression that we had to have a super majority to negate the P and Z's recommendation to approve. I was under the impression when that vote was three to two, that, uh, Krista had won and that she was going to get the tattoo parlor. That's why I said congratulations. It is my fault. I've been here since May. I misunderstood. I'll take full responsibility for, I wasn't being a smart aleck. I wasn't being catty. My mother raised me better than that. I'm not that kind of person. Uh, I've had people say things to me about it and I don't need anybody to tell me when I need to recognize that I made a mistake. If she was here, it's, it's being recorded. That is on me, but I in no way intended to make her feel bad. It, I just got it wrong. It's my fault. Okay. With that being said, we'll go to, and I apologize. The next item is the consent agenda. Item to be removed.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item five A from the consent agenda, please. And do we need to proceed with the, the rest of the consent agenda or item five A?
I'll make a motion that we approve everything but five A on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I, motion passes. Okay. Chad, you got it.
We could just have a, a brief overview of this item, please.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm Dan Tarravella, Assistant Chief of Police at the Police Department. This item is a, um, pretty routine purchase. There was a typo in your packet, which had a different number of the vehicles, but everything else throughout the packet was correct. What we're asking for is, um, oh, thank you. We're gonna pull up a, a really short slide thing here. Um, what I'm asking for is five total vehicles, which is four patrol vehicles and one civilian vehicle for our department. We buy about between four and five and six vehicles per year normally, depending on the cost and our needs. The cost has gone up just tremendously on both the vehicles and the equipment that goes inside the vehicles. But I was able to squeak out four patrol cars and one civilian vehicle. Um, but under very first slide, if we can pu- if, when we get to it, I initially had, which you probably saw in your packet, three patrol cars and a civilian vehicle. Um, but it's gonna be four. Um, and that includes the vehicles, the equipment that goes inside the vehicles, which is actually, all the things that go inside a vehicle actually cost more than the actual vehicle and, uh, and then the installation of all those items. Here's this, ju- just a real brief summary of the, the expenses that, that I'm referring to. When we, uh, that's a, um, that's one of our normal routine, uh, police Tahoe, Chevy Tahos we've bought for years and years. And then this is what we are looking at purchasing, um, this year. We have one of these already, a, a Ford, a four-wheel drive truck, which we learned during the ice storm a few years ago. We were incapacitated and had no four-wheel drive vehicles. So we're trying to add a couple every year. Um, just to be able to get around town during some sort of inclement situation. When we get these vehicles in, we have them outfitted and this is what, um, uh, you, you walk up to a vehicle that they're in the middle of outfitting and you go, my God, what did you just do to my car? But they strip it out completely down to the metal and, um, seats, headliners, carpet, dashboards. And then they put all the electrical equipment in it and then you get it back and it looks like a Star Trek spaceship. Um, so this purchase, um, is every, is from turnkey from, they're, they're from different vendors, but it's turnkey. We get our vehicles. We get our equipment, which is sitting on a pallet right now, waiting for the vehicles to arrive and then it's installed and then they're delivered to us. So I apologize for the typo on the very first slide, but I'm glad to answer any questions about, um, any portion of this.
Again, my, my biggest concern when we have this sort of item is just so we have clarity on expending taxpayer funds and uh, four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but like you say, these are things we have to do. But, uh, one of the questions that I have, is this out of the equipment replacement fund? Is?
Yes, we, uh, well, I don't know the exact terminology. It's, it's the V, uh, equipment repl- yes, vehicle equipment replacement fund. And we, we have that set budget every year. It's not changed. It's been about four hundred thousand dollars for as long as I kn- know of. Um, and it's because of the increases. It gets, it shrinks what we can get, but that's the budget that we get and um, if we didn't spend it all now, we can spend it throughout the year if we have a car that's wrecked or totaled and we, we have those. Um, I prefer to, to, to spend it now because if I waited six months from now and had to replace one, I wouldn't be able to find one. And that's the problem with, um, with anything with getting vehicles, which is why I asked for this to be put on this agenda instead of waiting until October. If I wait till October, I won't, I won't be able to get anything. So, um, that's why I asked for this to be approved tonight. So October one, at midnight, I could hit send and make our order.
I'm glad you're buying local.
And that's another thing, um, we're, we're trying to do that. Um, Tipton Ford has gotten on a state contract, which made this possible. Prior to, to that, we, we really couldn't. It was, it's just a much more difficult process to buy something of this magnitude if they're not on a state contract. So, um, we normally buy the Chevy Tahoe and we're pleased with those and have been for years. And we will more than likely go back to those. I just needed a fleet of four-wheel drive trucks for now. And these will last us, the way our vehicles normally last will last us ten or twelve or fifteen years. So, um, I'm glad to do local whenever we can, um, with vendors or these larger items too.
All the questions I had. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment?
I make a motion, we approve agenda item five A as presented.
Thank you second. We have a motion to second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay, now we'll go to the regular agenda. Item, excuse me, six A. Receive an annual report from the Boys and Girls Club of Deep East Texas, uh, Community Services Interim Director, Steve Davidson.
Introduce him.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor, Council, uh, Jessica Sal, Community Services Interim Director, here to introduce Steve Davidson, who's the President um, of Boys and Girls Clubs of Deep East Texas for his annual presentation.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Johnson, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. Uh, most of the information we're gonna provide you tonight is, is statistical data, some history. Uh, we did send something to the council members a couple of months ago that showed a lot of pictures of some of the activities that we do in the clubs. Uh, just to give you a little bit more of, of what we do in the clubs, uh, as opposed to just statistical data. But Boys and Girls Club originated in the late eighties. Uh, we get began our program at Mike Moses Junior High until a capital campaign was established to build the facility there on Park Street nineteen ninety-six. Uh, nineteen ninety-eight, we went into an agreement with the city and the school district to build, uh, an aquatic center on that property after a capital campaign and a lead gift by the Lehman family. Uh, the center was opened in two thousand. The aquatic center, uh, serves a number of purposes in our community. It's used by the children who are members of the club. It's used Nac- by Nacogdoches ISD, uh, for the swim team and now their water polo team as well, both for the high school and the middle school. Used by the citizens of our community. Uh, general swim is three times a day from anywhere from an hour to three hours. Uh, time slots, uh, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturdays, we have two hours of open swim and closed on Sundays. And it's also available for rental by any resident or business here in our community as well. Uh, we do lifeguard training classes. We do general CPR, first aid classes. We do swim lessons now both for youth and adults. Uh, we do collaboration with the local Boy Scouts and, and youth groups for their certifications and we do water aerobics. Statistical numbers for our pool, uh, pools open about fifteen hundred hours a year. Uh, total patrons, we had four thousand one hundred eighty-six people this past year, of which three thousand eighteen were adults and one thousand one hundred sixty-eight were youth. Uh, other youth served, uh, our swim team, our USA Swim Team had two hundred thirty-one participants. We had three hundred fifty-one youth and adult, uh, swim lesson participants. And we hosted fourteen birthday parties with approximately three hundred people in attendance. In the fall of twenty twenty-one, we received the Twenty First Century Grant. Um, that's a program that we're doing, uh, at six additional school sites. Basically, underperforming students and underperforming schools. Three of those locations are here in Nacogdoches, uh, Fredonia, which is now Mike Moses Elementary, Brookswin Jones and Carpenter Elementary. Uh, the grant runs for a period of five years and it's renewable annually. Uh, we serve an additional four hundred kids in those three locations on top of the kids that we serve at the club. Uh, our general membership, we've got one thousand six hundred and eighteen members. During the school year, we have six hundred and twenty-five participants in the club, the school sites and the aquatics gymnastics. Uh, during the summer, we actually consolidate the three school sites into one location. This past year it was Carpenter. Uh, so between the club, Carpenter and the aquatics and gymnastics program, we had nine hundred and fifty kids registered this summer, which is the largest, uh, unduplicated numbers that we've had since I've been here. I've been here six years. Uh, football, we have four hundred registered, uh, in communities of not only Nacogdoches, but Lufkin, Diboll and Corrigan, uh, and then our gymnastics program. Club is open Monday through Friday from three to seven and during the summer months, Monday through Friday from eight to five. Uh, we make our fees affordable for everyone. Uh, during the school year, uh, August through May, it's seventy-five dollars for the year. And during the summer months, June through August, it's also seventy-five dollars for the summer, for the first child. And any additional children, it's only fifty dollars. So we try not to be a hardship on our families. Uh, we also partner with Superior and AmeriGroup Medicaid providers, who will either pay for a school year membership or a summer membership for those children that are part of their program. This past, uh, summer, about a third of our membership, uh, was provided by Superior. Uh, demographics, night, forty-nine percent boys, fifty-one percent girls. About eighty percent of our members are under the age of twelve and twenty percent over the age of thirteen. Uh, in our ethnicity background, uh, breakdown, about thirty-five percent Caucasian, thirty-six percent African American, twenty percent, twenty-one percent Hispanic and eight percent multi-race. Uh, about sixty-two percent of our families, uh, live with both parents and thirty-eight percent live with either a single parent or a guardian. Uh, meals provided to our members to address the food and security issue. As an organization, we provided two hundred and twenty-nine thousand meals this past year. Eighty thousand seven hundred forty-one, or almost thirty-five percent of that total was specifically here in Nacogdoches County. And total market penetration, uh, we've got sixteen hundred and eighteen members. Our school district has five thousand nine hundred and forty members. So about twenty-eight percent of all the kids who attend Nacogdoches Schools are involved in the Boys and Girls Club in one capacity or another. And then last, uh, just our revenue streams, just to try to show you that we do have a, a diverse, uh, budget and revenue streams here. Donations, annual campaign, fundraising, grants and foundations. So we're not solely dependent on one, uh, revenue stream. Uh, we try to spread it out. So if one area kind of falters one year, then maybe we could pick it up in another area. So. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You do a great job and we appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you.
Very much.
For the work y'all do in the community.
Tremendous asset to this community and you got a big check this weekend from the truck show. That helped, didn't it?
We did. So, um, we've, we've had some, uh, air circulation issues in our gymnastics facility. So we're actually getting a big, uh, rear end fan, if you know what I mean. Uh, we're getting one of those fans delivered in about two weeks and we're gonna install that and that's gonna really help us uh, with our AC unit and really circulating the air in there. So we're excited and, and thank you for approving that event. I mean, there were a lot of charities that truly benefited from, from what those folks did.
Sure will.
So. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item, uh,
We actually have a contract to approve with that, right?
That's next, isn't it?
Oh, it's next. Okay, sorry. I was ahead of you. I apologize.
That's okay. We all make mistakes. Okay. Uh, next item is, uh, six B. Consider approval of a con- uh, of an agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and the Boys and Girls Club of Deep East Texas for essential services in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Jessica.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Interim Director. I'm gonna say that a lot tonight because it's kind of Jessica's show for a little while. Um, so the item you have before you, um, is our Boys and Girls Club Annual Contract, um, in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Um, the Boys and Girls Club provides several essential services for the City of Nacogdoches, as is outlined in our contract and of course then all the wonderful things Mr. Davidson outlined as well. Um, in the city contract, these are the essential services that are lined out, the pool facilities, pool staffing, pool operation hours, um, and then the after-school programs. Um, some of the contract requirements are communication of all hours and pricing schedules to the city, which is the attachment A in the end of the contract that's in your packet. Um, notification to the city of any changes in services or hours. Um, that came into play, I believe, about a year ago when they had to replace, um, the roof on the Lehman Swim Center. Um, let the city know beforehand that the pool would be closed for X number of days, so we could get that out to the public as well. Um, and then of course, our wonderful annual report to Nacogdoches City Council and that contract price is for seventy thousand dollars per year. Uh, the current contract will expire September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Um, so if renewed, this contract will be renewed for an additional twelve months, beginning October first and then ending September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Have any, uh, public comment?
Brandy Cartwright, uh, twenty-eight oh six North Pecan Street. Um, I love the Boys and Girls Club and I just wanted to do some positive public, um, sentiment towards that. It's a great program and I'm really glad the city supports it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve item six B as presented.
I'll second that and not jump the gun again.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to item six C. Receive annual report from Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful. Uh, this is Sal.
So I just went to the side. Jessica Sal, Interim Community Services Director, um, here to introduce Ashley Villarreal, who is the Executive Director of Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful and she's gonna do our annual report.
Hello. Um, as Jessica said, I'm Ashley Villarreal, the Executive Director for KMB. Um, so our mission is to, um, we have three specific areas, which are litter prevention, waste reduction and beautification that we offer here in the town. Um, we also, um, do various, uh, city events, um, as far as litter pickups, which y'all are aware of. Um, we also provide, um, continuous volunteer efforts, um, of the city. Um, here's a list of our current or in this past year's board members. Um, I love these guys. They're all great. So these are the programs that we offered, um, from last October until this September. And I will actually go through each one of these. So, um, our tech cycle Saturdays, which happened to be a community favorite. Um, if you didn't know, we had our last one in August and we filled up our trailer in an hour. Um, but we offer this, um, four times a year. It's roughly quarterly. Um, we partner this with STS Elek- STS Electronics out of Jacksonville. They're actually the recycling company that come and pick the items up from us. So we just kind of work as a third party where the community can come drop off, um, any old electronic items for free. Um, and there at the bottom, you can see some of the kind of cool retro things that we've collected. Um, for anyone that wants to know, our next one will be November the fourth. That happens to be my biggest phone call that I get. Just, when is your next tech cycle? Um, also quarterly, roughly quarterly, um, we participate in, um, Tech Dot's Adopt a Highway campaign. Um, this is where we clean up, um, two mile portion. Ours is on the loop. And anybody is open to adopt their own highway. If anybody wants to, feel free to jump in. Um, our next one is actually gonna be next weekend, which is September the thirtieth. So we also do, um, what we call a fall sweep and this is actually a program by Keep Texas Beautiful. Um, and so our past fall sweep and, uh, oh, that's, that should have been November twenty twenty-two. I'm sorry. Last year, we had, um, a bull planting at Benita Creek Park, which if anyone is aware, um, the bull planting has been kind of a long-term project of KMB. It started years, years ago, um, by, uh, Deborah Stevens. Um, she played a big part in that. We actually got to, um, finish the planting all the way up to the pickleball court there at, uh, Benita Creek Park. Um, and we also did our tech cycle collection as well as our adopt a highway. So we also participate in, this is SFA's event. Um, it's the MLK Day of Service and, um, it is, uh, where students can, uh, put in some service hours, um, on MLK Day. And we just provide a variety of service projects. That way students can come and help out and volunteer in our community. Um, we did a cleanup of Temple Spray Park or MLK, um, Park. Um, we did some in Leni- Lenana Creek and then also, once again, our adopt a highway and our tech cycle. We also parto- participate in SFA's big event. It's kind of the same concept as our MLK Day event. It's just where we provide service projects. Um, and SFA students can volunteer to participate and we did our adopt a highway, our tech cycle collection, as well as a cleanup at Benita Creek. Um, and also, uh, various areas out at Lake Nak. The library puts on an Earth Day at Pecan Park and we participated in it this past spring. Um, and April is just when Earth Day is. We handed out Don't Mess with Texas coloring books and we also, um, were able to help kids put together their own seed starters. Um, and they were actually made out of upcycle containers such as like strawberries and raspberry containers, stuff like that. We had our board members collect them and then so the kids not only got to bring home their own seed starters, they also got to learn the, um, the reduce, reuse, recycle terminology. Um, another community favorite was our tire recycle day. We hosted our third one this past year. This is a partnership that we have with the city as well as Cook Tire. Um, this year we were ov- we were able to collect over three hundred tires. Um, the tires are picked up by Liberty Tire, which is in Belmont and they recycle it into various items like, uh, doormats and, uh, playground mulch and things like that. Um, and so this event helps keep unwanted tires um, out of our creeks, our lakes, the landfill, various items like that. It's, it's a free event that we put on that the public can bring us their unwanted tires rather than dumping them. So we also, um, hosted Texas Arbor Day planting. This is a partnership with the city and then also Garden Capital of Texas. Um, this past Arbor Day, we planted roughly about thirty-five to forty native trees out in Pioneer Park. And this is something that we do every year. We're actually a Trees City USA and so we have to hold this event to be able to hold that title. We also have our Christmas lights recycle and so this past year, we offered our second one. And, um, how it works is we just set out bins. We had them at, um, the lobby of the rec center and library and then we also had one set up at the chamber. And the public could come and drop off their unwanted or unusable, um, Christmas lights. And we offered that through MLK Day, so that gave people enough time to, even if their lights ran out over Christmas, they could dispose of them properly. And STS Recycling came and picked those up, which is the same company that recycles all of the electronics that we collect. Um, also as stated earlier, we handle the, uh, festival litter abatement, um, of both the Blueberry Festival and the Christmas Festival that we hold here. Um, that picture there on the left is a picture I took after we had cleaned up everything after this past summer's Blueberry Festival. Um, so you can tell, you can see where it looks like nobody was even there, which the rain helped a lot in that aspect, this go around. But we do pick up a lot of litter during that day. Um, so this is by far my favorite thing that we did this past year. Um, as you recall, in my last year's, um, presentation, we were in the works of, um, this Friends of the Forest Trail, um, which was a, a project amongst a many a people. And if you haven't been to this trail or know anything about it, I've posted a QR code there that will lead you to our website about it. Um, but we basically, we have two different trails, um, one at Pioneer Park and one at Pecan Park and you can see the little, um, the little box there, um, at the, the left-hand bottom corner. That's essentially what you're looking at. And then you scan a QR code whenever you get to the park and each little individual character or forest friend has their own story to tell. And the stories range, um, from different things that KMB stand for, like reduce, reuse, recycle, beautification as far and also, um, Nacogdoches history. Um, and this was a huge project with, um, Holden Kelly was the Boy Scout that built the boxes and then, um, the city's, uh, library, um, there were some people at the library that actually designed those beautiful characters and wrote the cute little stories. And then the recreation department really helped us put up the boxes. Um, and so on Texas Arbor Day last year, we held a soft grand opening um, with, where we invited some whole homeschool groups as well as SFA's Charter School. And then you can see on the right-hand side where we held an actual grand opening for the trails. And that was in April. And so, yeah, that I just want to say thank you for, um, the city's continuous support, um, and all, everything that you do for us. Here's any questions?
Okay, any public comment? Okay, there being, uh, uh, again, I saw your, your, uh, you picked up trash for, um, uh, the tractor dealer this weekend too, didn't I? I saw your, didn't I see your?
So that, we actually didn't pick up trash for that, but our litter bins are actually available to use. Anybody can use them. And so they did borrow, um, several of our boxes to be able to use. So that is another service we provide too, but we just don't pick up the trash in that aspect, but anybody can borrow our bins for any kind of event.
Y'all do a good job and, and we're very happy to have you. Thank you very much.
I do have a question that I've gotten a number of, of messages over the last few weeks, asking me what the status of recycling in Nacogdoches is. And I feel like you're gonna know a lot and that might be a question for our staff also.
Yeah, that's actually more of a question for the staff. Um, before I came onto KMB, that was actually, um, kind of cut back per the city's guidelines and I think, uh, what it comes down to is money. Um, recycling has gotten very expensive over the past few years. Um, basically what happened was China stopped taking our recyclables. Um, and so it's almost impossible to recycle anything in our country anymore. Um, but yeah, I'm sure the city can offer more of that. As far as KMB stands point, what we like to say that we rec- we recycle the non-daily items. So like the tires, the Christmas lights, the electronics, things like that. That's what we try to aim towards. Um, the cardboard is, uh, as I'm sure you know, is definitely, it's still recycled. Um, but everything else is just, it's very expensive to recycle.
So beyond what we're So beyond what we're currently doing, are there ways that the city could help you with like your tech recycling? Are there things that we could do to make that better for you and for your organization?
So um I know one issue that we had brought up in our past meeting, and that was essentially because our tech cycle filled up so fast, which I will say, since I've been here in the past three years, that's the first time that's ever happened, is that it's come close, but it's never filled up, especially within an hour. Um and so we talked about potentially um trying to find another location, because all we have is the trailer that we put our recyclables in, um or the electronics in, and so that that's the issue, is that once that fills up, I have nowhere else to put it. Um and so it may be beneficial to try to find somewhere else to put it. Um I don't know if the city has anything like that, that might be something we talk um I talk with my board about, and then maybe have a conversation with the city later on to try to figure out, but um yeah, that, like I said, that was all just, it was our last boarding, board meeting that we talked about that, so.
Well, and and the reason I ask particularly about that is because in my my past professional life, I I dealt with STS and did several large truckloads of of recycled tech goods. And so I don't know if they have other opportunities that that might make it easier for all of us. But I I know I've sent a big trailer load of stuff from Martinsville before, so.
Yeah, and that's the thing is, I know people have asked if we could possibly um offer it more often than just quarterly, and the thing is, is that we are just a volunteer-based organization, and we like to do other things besides the tech cycle. And so we're, if we were to filter in more tech cycle, we'd have to get rid of some other things, and we just don't really want to do that. Um so our dilemma right now is just space um that we might potentially try to look into. So but yeah, cause tech cycle, I mean, I'm sorry, STS, whenever they come and pick it up from us, they have this huge eighteen-wheeler. So they have the space to take it, we just don't have the space to store it, because they also um it takes them roughly like three to four weeks to actually pick it up from us, once I submit it to them, so yeah.
Totally understand.
Do you have to pay them to take it?
No, we don't pay anything at all.
All the questions I had, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the approval uh of the agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful. Oh, I'm sorry, oop, sorry, that's right, we just considered it.
It happens.
See, I see what you did.
It's my fault, I take it.
Okay, D, okay, um next item, um I'm still gonna make a motion. Okay, consider approval of agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful for essential services, Ms. Jessica.
Mayor Council Jessica Sal, Community Services interim director. Um this is the annual contract between city and Nacogdoches and Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful, otherwise known as K and B. Um I'll go through this quickly, since I know we're gonna have a motion anyway. Um so our essential services um that Ki- uh Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful provides is, of course, the recycling efforts, activities that promote beautification, and then educational activities in partnership with other community organizations. And then, of course, the wonderful presentation that y'all get to hear every year from um the executive director. Um on the city obligation side, um there are a few obligations the city has to Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful. Um we make a monthly donation of two thousand dollars um to K and B, which equates to twenty-four thousand dollars annually. Um and I know council knows this, but for the public that doesn't know it, um we also collect and distribute donations to K and B. Um on the bottom of your water bill, if you look at it, there is an optional donation to K and B that you can pay, I believe it's a dollar more. Um and as the city gets those on a monthly basis, we then give those back to K and B to use for all these efforts. Um this agreement um comes to an end on September thirtieth um of this this year, and then if renewed, it's for another twelve months, um starting October first, and then ending again September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment?
Brandy Cartwright, twenty-eight oh six North Pecan Street. Um so the water bill that she was talking about, um I do automatic payment of my water bill, and you cannot choose to donate to K and B on that particular thing. So something to think about as, you know, you're updating systems and things like that in the future, to have that option for those of us who, you know, do, cause I can like think about what I would do and write a check and, you know, but I don't do that all the time, so it would be much easier if I could just click a little thing when I sign up. Um so I just wanted to let you guys know about that.
Thank you, Brandy. Chad, you wanna make a motion?
No, go ahead.
I'll make a motion uh city uh to approve the agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and Keep the Nacogdoches Beautiful.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor? Motion passes. Okay, thank you, Jessica. Next item, public hearing, consider approval of a specific use permit for light manufacturing slash assembly in a B two general business districts on lots four and five of the Reese Number Two subdivision located at twenty-five twenty-four South Street and Lot seventy-seven dash B dash one, City Block fifty-six, located at twenty-five sixteen South Street. Uh this request is submitted by Cesar Escalante.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, Juan Palet, planning technician. These properties are located just south of where Old Fkin Road splits from South Street, which give these lots access to both streets. The purpose of the SUP is to allow for the continued use of light manufacturing and assembly of metal carports at these locations. The applicant originally opened at twenty-five twenty-four South Street as a car audio installation shop in twenty-eleven. Within this year, he began to assemble and distribute metal carports in the back of the car audio installation shop located at twenty-five twenty-four South Street. The owner recently purchased uh the adjacent property to the north at twenty-five sixteen South Street and plans to expand the carport business to that location. The owner has no plans to expand the footprint of either buildings. The property is zone B two general business and requires the approval of a specific use permit to conduct light manufacturing and assembly in the zoning district. The SUP is an extra layer of approval that allows staff, commission, and city council the opportunity to improve, I mean, to impose additional conditions if necessary on such developments. Also, the SUP does not change the underlying zoning of the property. The applicant is proposing the following conditions to help mitigate any concerns from the adjacent property owners. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM, Saturday, eight AM to twelve PM, and closed on Sundays. All light manufacturing and assembly operations will be contained to the interior of the property. No parking staging of vehicles along Old Fkin Road. And the applicant plans to construct a seven-foot-tall metal fence along the western property line to buffer the residential area that's across Old Fkin Road uh to the west. This is a quick overview of the site. From the south at twenty-five twenty-four, you have the original car stereo shop, which behind that, he started doing the car port assembly area. And to the north of that is going to be the shipping and receiving area. Vehicles will come in from South Street, uh load and unload, and then exit out uh Old Fkin Road. Uh to the north of that, at twenty-five sixteen is a storage area, as well as behind that, the assembly and holding area. And also, there are along the back of the western property line is where the applicant is proposing to construct the uh seven-foot-tall metal fence uh to block the day-to-day, the day-to-day operations of his business uh from the residential neighborhood across from Old Fkin Road. Here's an example of the proposed fence that the applicant will construct. Here are some site photos of the property. On the top left is the original car stereo shop, and on the bottom is the property to the north where he will be uh moving some of his uh car port assembly area to. This is a view of the rear of the properties, uh looking at it from Old Fkin Road. And uh this is a view of the carport assembly area from Old Fkin Road, as well as the shipping and receiving area. Um this is a view of the shipping and receiving area uh uh from South Street, as well as the car audio installation area. And here's a view of the subject property along Old Fkin Road, and this is where the applicant is proposing to construct the seven-foot-tall uh metal fence. So although the future land use plan calls for this area to be commercial, staff believes that the proposed use is a lower-intensity industrial use, and with the applicant's proposed conditions would therefore fit into a commercial zone. These are the eight conditions for approval, and staff believes that the SUP will not significantly affect the density of the area, and with the proposed conditions, is compatible with the existing commercial properties. This slide shows the types of uses within the two-hundred-foot notification area. Staff sent out eleven notices to property owners within this area. Staff has received two written responses in opposition of the request from property owners within two hundred feet of the notification area. The concerns the residents were, the concerns of the residents were that the business is expanding beyond what the space can handle, vehicles parked along Old Fkin Road, and the noise levels. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting for property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property on July seventeenth uh to discuss and answer questions for the, about this request. Uh none of the surrounding property owners attended that meeting. On September eleventh, uh the PNZ, the PNZ Commission voted unanimously to approve the request as presented with the following conditions, that the hours of operation be Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM, Saturday, eight to twelve, and closed on Sundays. No parking along Old Fkin Road, and contain all of the light manufacturing and assembly operations to the interior of the property, and construct a seven-foot-tall wooden fence along the western property line to buffer the residential area. This concludes uh staff's presentation, and the applicant is present to answer any questions about his operations.
Okay, we have any public comment? Okay. We'll open for discussion.
Kind of, I go for, or go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just have one about uh that seven-foot-tall fence. I saw some trees in the picture, is it on the other side of the trees, or is it on the street side of the trees?
Uh the fence will be on the outside of those trees, the trees will be on the inside of the fence line.
So you won't see them, really?
Not necessarily, well, you'll see the top of them, cause they're pretty tall.
But there's no plans for any kind of landscaping to, like, if I lived there, I'm thinking a metal fence is, you know, pretty severe to look at. Uh there's no plans for any kind of landscaping to cut this?
Not, not on the outside, uh because they're not expanding uh any of the existing buildings, it doesn't trigger the uh commercial landscaping uh in the ordinance. But that could be an additional condition if.
Is there anybody here opposed to this? Okay, but you do have two letters against it, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I I I go down this road from one to twenty times a day, my warehouse is just past this. These people have grown a business. I mean, it is remarkable what they've done with with this family's done with with uh car stereo installation and now this. And the way this looks now compared to what it looked like before, this is beautiful. And a fence isn't gonna uh make it look worse, because there's, and there are abandoned cars out there somewhere too. Not on his property, but but uh
In the area?
In the area. Okay, that's all I gotta say right now, go ahead, Chad.
So could you go back to the conditions?
These conditions were the?
Condition, the proposed conditions from planning and zoning. Okay, so this is right in the middle of my ward, and I drive that road probably as often as you do, Mayor. And uh I've gotten a number of emails that are, that were not specifically listed, no one wanting to shut down the business, just to make sure that we, the council, were aware that vehicles are staged along the roadway. That's addressed. Uh the noise levels, there's sometimes working outside of the eight to six hours, and there's a lot of noise, the fence and the time and the conditions would take care of those issues uh based on what I've seen. I think it's fantastic that y'all have grown a business and uh and are able to expand, and I'm also glad that we're able to put these conditions on it to protect the neighborhood.
Yeah, I've seen cars out there, but the the cars are are working on the property to get the, like, the concrete done. And uh I mean, when he gets this finished, I don't think there's gonna be
Shouldn't be any.
Any, an issue at all. It is the owner here, does he wanna, come on up? Just state your name, please.
Cesar Escalante, uh twenty-five twenty-four South Street, Nacogdoches.
Cesar, you do everything you did in my floor at the store.
I did, um I stopped doing that during, I stopped doing, I stopped doing foundation work during COVID, because uh honestly, three, four of my guys nearly died from it. At first, I thought it was like, you know, an exaggeration that, you know, people, it's a flu or something, and you know, you see all these things and going on in China, Italy, and everywhere else, and like, you know, I think they're getting carried away, but I don't watch a lot of news, because I don't like negative everything. That's all you see to me in news, is everything negative. So when it started getting closer to home, then of course, I realized, okay, you know, we're facing something that's very severe and that everybody needs to protect themselves from. And at the time, my son was born, which is February sixth, twenty twenty, which is when all the COVID stuff started escalating. And that's why I decided to stop doing foundation work, because I was literally going into three to four different individuals' houses per day. And I would show up and people coughing all over and this and that, so I, it honestly scared me. I was like, I'm not bringing this home to my son. No, no amount of money in the world is worth that to me, so cold turkey, I stopped. And I decided I'm gonna retire and stay home, but after a month, I went stir-crazy. So I had an opportunity uh along with a partner to start manufacturing, you know, carports. And, you know, we figured it was something that we could do right there in the area that we have without, you know, costing a lot of, you know, stuff, commotion with the neighbors and stuff like that. And at first, you know, everybody's right, there was a lot of cars out there, because we had to pour concrete, we had to do certain things, you know, to make it where we could stay with inside those walls. But now we have it to the point where, you know, gates can be closed when the workers get there, and we don't have a lot, we have four, four basically employees. Uh one welding, a couple bending metal, and one cut, cutting metal. So with the fence going up, I've tried it, I stood outside, you can't hear hardly anything, if anything. And and the big complaint that we did have, especially like from the church next door to us and stuff, is that there was trucks and trailers parked along Old Fkin Road, but that's because when we were pouring concrete, we didn't have a place for them to pull in. And now, from some of the pictures that you can see, you're able to pull in from South Street, get the, get the the tubes and the sheet metal loaded, and then open up the gate and leave out Old Fkin Road. So there won't be any cars, you know, staged outside or parked outside. And and and, you know, as as we progress, we've gotten better with everything, now we're able to kind of um staged so that the people show up, hey, like, you're you're here from eight to ten, load up, and then you're gone. After that time, someone else pulls in, this way, we don't have two or three trucks with a trailer outside, you know, interfering with traffic. And, you know, we don't want that at all, of course. The noise that sometimes people do hear, it happens to come from the stereo shop, sometimes when we have to crank it up a little bit, just to make sure that it doesn't shut off, you know, after someone's running down the road, placing for a little bit, but that usually, like I said, by five thirty, six o'clock, it's it's also gone.
So you're still doing the series?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's that's something, that, I do that, cause I love music. Um I've been doing stereo installations since I was a kid in high school, so it's been a long time. I did it in Denver, and when I moved from Denver to here uh in ninety-six, um I lost my hand. When I lost my hand, I thought my my life was over, you know, went to Big Depression, this and that, and I had nothing to fall back on. Uh but something, I promised myself when I lost my hand that I would never work for somebody else, because the company here, which is called uh it was uh that I would never work for somebody else because the company here, which is called, it was, what is it called now? It's, it's next to the Budweiser on, when you're leaving past Walmart, they changed the name on it. They, they make, they make gaskets and stuff out there anyway. So they, when, you know.
Clipper.
Well, it's.
Clipper or whatever.
It's, it's called, oh, I can't believe I forgot the name. Yeah, Parker, Parker. Anyway, so basically when they sold me down the river, I told them, I told myself I would never in my life work for someone again. So my only thing that I had to fall back on was the stereo equipment. So I started doing it in my house and eventually we ended up right there. And with one hand, you know, I would do wiring, I would do everything. And little by little, you know, we built it into our real business. And we've been doing it now for 24 years. So it's just one of those things.
He's a hard worker, I can tell you that. His family works hard for it with him too, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Caesar.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the specific use permit as presented with the conditions from planning and zoning.
And I will second it. We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next item. Consider approval of a contract by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Tiger Creek Enterprises for the Foredom Market 1878 Waterline Improvements Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $119,047.50.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Guess I can lean this way more now.
Yes, it's all over here.
Uh, thank you. Pitch hitting for Case Offerman tonight. He became ill and so couldn't make it. Tonight, we're here for your consideration and approval of a construction contract for Tiger Creek Enterprises. This is to install a six-inch water line down 1878. This is the very outside end of our system and extends beyond the city limits. But we serve customers out there. The current line's two-inch and is overloaded and not doing well. We have made very close friends with some of the residents at the very end of it because we talk once a week. So they're very anxious to have these improvements done. They suffer a lot of water pressure issues in delivery. So we've been planning this for a while. This was designed by 215 Consultants and they helped us bid this out. We had six bids and we were very fortunate to get that. The low bidder was Tiger Creek Enterprises. They're out of Bratus. They're known to us, we've known them around, although they have never worked for us at the city. We did check references on them on some actual water line work. They do other types of boring work as well and had all positive results and reports from them. So as such, after reviewing that, we are recommending award to Tiger Creek Enterprises in the amount of $119,047.50 for this water line installation project. Be happy to answer questions after public comment.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, there being none, any discussion? To have a motion?
I move that we approve the contract buying between the City of Nacogdoches and Tiger Creek Enterprises for the FM 1878 Waterline Improvements Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $119,047.50.
And I'll second it.
Yeah, there you go.
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none, motion carries. Next item, item G. Consider approval of an ordinance amending Article 2, Division 1 of the City of Nacogdoches Code of Ordinances to add Sections 98-30, 98-31, 98-32, and 98-33 to require any person excavating within the public right-of-way to obtain, obtain line location information addressing construction around marked and unmarked utility lines within the public right-of-way and providing a penalty, providing an effective date, and providing for related matters, matters, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I tried to make that longer, but I ran out of words, so it was okay. So this is an ordinance we've talked about and talked about needing. As you know, we are saturated. We are, I guess it's a curse and a blessing, but we are saturated with a lot of activity going on primarily to install fiber optic cables in our town. I think we have somewhere in the vicinity of 14 to 17 boring rigs as we speak now, drilling through something. We've had a lot of strikes, which is where they hit private or public service lines or public lines. It's almost an everyday event and certainly that's gonna happen. But we didn't have much in the way of ordinances and controls and things that we could use to kind of maybe perfect this process a little bit and minimize these strikes. So we have developed this ordinance to give us some controls and quite honestly, to give us some enforcement penalties. On top of that, we have in, added some installation type things. So I want to run through, I guess, the executive summary of this is probably the best way to do it. We can answer one by one questions. But shake all the ordinance down into the thing that any contractor that is building in the right-of-way must obtain. Locates, this is where you see the flagging and the painting going on, through our 811 call system. They've got to pothole or hand locate all these marked lines. In other words, not just look at the paint, they've actually got to physically locate them now, which will then give them a confirmation of depth. And that's usually the problem. They know they're there, but they're a little, they're not deep enough and I'm banging the mic again, so. Quit waving my hands. Marked utilities that are under streets now require the city to be on-site before they bore because we don't want to dig up and pothole the streets. So we'll get some of our staff out there to help lend some expertise. We don't know exactly where they are either, but we've got probably some good intuition to guide them with. A contractor must immediately fix all damaged private service lines before moving forward. Certainly, there will be some damages. One of the problems we've had in the past is these contractors, their subcontractors, their installers have damaged the sewer tap, damaged a water tap, and maybe haven't responded as quickly as the owner would like to return their service. So we've had some with several days of downtime and, and at best case, a day. So this requires them to move forward and do that. It limits their working hours from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, except we don't let them bore after 2:00 o'clock on Friday so that we don't get a 4:49 water line bore that takes our crews all night to fix, so. There can be exception to this if especially approved. They're also allowed on that Friday afternoon to do cleanup and set boxes and do other things. It's just the boring activities. It limits how and when they can close traffic lanes. So if they need to bore across a road or need to set up in the shoulder, they can close the traffic lanes, but it follows the manual and uniform traffic control devices and all the things that they've got to do to do this safely. So we kind of can enforce that as well. One of the big items, and you know, we've had a lot of complaints on this, is this now requires installations in residential properties, is how we worded it, to have the flat grade boxes. The box you see there on your left, what's been going in is the pedestal on your right, which has received some critique. So now we have in this ordinance, still allows those pedestals to be used in commercial areas, but basically delegates them to add or near side property lines, which in a commercial environment is gonna be next to the power poles and the other pedestals that are there. So we think in a commercial environment, it's probably reasonable to let them use those on those property lines. But I think this will solve what's probably our number one complaint, which has been the pedestals in the middle of residential yards. So in all cases, and, and we elaborate this, Jerry helped me tremendously writing this and we did this together, it was a team effort. But in, in multiple ways, we've got built in there that the contractor is responsible for all damages unless the utilities were not marked. So if we fail to mark something or our contractor that's doing the marking fails to mark it, then we bear some, some responsibility for that. But in general, they assume the responsibility for everything. They've got to follow certain standards when they work in historic or downtown areas because we may have some other restrictions on what they can do and how they can access things. Brick streets can only be removed with approval of the city engineer, so they can't just go out and do that. And then again, this has an enforcement clause at the back. It's basically a Class C misdemeanor with fines up to $500 a day. So we think this was modeled after several cities that kind of made some stabs at this before us. And so we were able to take a lot of those good pieces, a lot of good Jerry's intuition and helped us write. So we think we've got a pretty good ordinance here that's gonna meet. I don't think it's gonna make us forever not hit anything. I think it will greatly reduce it and it also gives us some ability to do enforcement. So be happy to answer your questions on this after public comment.
Any public comment? Okay, all right, I've got a question. Okay. Go back to that utility location ordinance. There, there you go, right there. No, the other one, where it shows the picture. Okay, so you're saying now that they're flat. Okay, what, I'm talking about those boxes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've had subdivisions call me that they have the towers.
Right.
The next subdivision over have the flat. Can they go back and change the towers to flat?
So this ordinance does not require them to go back and replace those. We weren't unsure exactly how you can enforce and do that because we didn't have an ordinance in place when they did it. So this ordinance does not require that, is the honest truth. I think what you have seen even today, and we have numerous meetings with some of these installers. There's four fiber optic installers. The primary one meets with us now every week. We have teams meetings and go over problems and issues. And I say that because one of the things we have passed to them is the significant complaint has been these pedestals in, in the residential areas. We believe that they have now moved on their own accord to try to do this. So I think what you see is some of the new ones are getting flats and some of the ones they did back have pedestals. Whether they voluntarily go back and do it, Mayor, I, I don't know, but this ordinance doesn't force that to happen. I think we're gonna have to address that at some point though, because if you start doing flat ones, because that's the biggest complaint I've had, that in breaking water lines and then not fixing it, just saying. Correct. Not my problem. Correct. So this is great that we're doing this. And had we, had we known exactly what we were fixing to experience, this ordinance would have been earlier in this progress. But this, this kind of came up and we, we had a learning experience before we wrote this. So you're right, we kind of got into it a number of months before we perfected this.
So first of all, thank you both for the, the time and effort that's gone into this. I know it's, it's taken a lot of time. We've been talking about it for several months in our conversations. I would be remiss if I did not mention a specific resident of our city who was gone to a different state this summer and had the sewer tap hit and tens of thousands of dollars of damage and came home to.
Yes.
That in their house, everywhere. Had to rip sheetrock out four feet. It was a whole ordeal. I don't know if she's back in her house yet. And I, I need to talk to her and, and clear that up. But I told her that I would come here and say that we're going to fix this to make sure this doesn't happen to someone else. So thank you both for your work.
You bet.
Glad we got this done.
Steve, could you, could you just, they don't, I know they don't have to do it, but could you just say it would be really a nice gesture to, to, to take all your towers back because, and put in flats? I mean, they're gonna, they may say no, but just, I mean, let them say no. If you don't ask, you don't ever know.
Mayor, we're, we're happy to pass that along. I don't know what the implication of that is once the towers have been installed, going back to a submerged handhole. But it's something we'll have to present to them. Again, like I say, we have a good communication going on now, literally every week. And so I think we can at least explore that. We didn't feel like there was a lot of teeth or ways for us to go backwards.
I, I agree.
So I think other than negotiating and inquiring, I'll be happy to make that inquiry.
Just to ask and, and if they want to offer for the homeowner to pay for, you know. I'd, I'd rather have the flat than, than the tower in my yard.
We'll try to find out what the paths are and I'll send you a, an update on whatever.
That'd be great. Yeah, okay.
Be great. Public relations on their part for future use, you know.
Sure, because they want people to pay for their services.
Yeah. Well, and Mr. Kiplinger sat in my office as we've met with him and as well. And I think one of the comments, we say, if you want us to buy your services, you've got to kind of remain popular. So we, we remind them that the sales of their services is contingent on how happy the public is.
For the record, I was not nearly that diplomatic.
I can imagine.
Okay, that's true.
Just out of curiosity, I'm assuming that the pedestals are a lot easier and faster to install? Is that, is that why?
I would assume that's correct.
Because I, I know that when a, a fiber line was cut, when they were doing the sewer and water replacements around the loop, we got a flat box, so. So I.
Well, you, you guys have seen them when they do their boring and they come up with the two or three or four orange pipes and they're, they're there and then they go on. These pedestals literally kind of slide over that, whereas the below grade boxes, I think, take some engineering to get it all in there, I suspect.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion, if not a motion?
Yeah, I want to make a motion because I want to read this whole thing. I would like to make a motion of approval of the ordinance amending our, am I on the right place? Article 2, Division 1 of the City of Nacogdoches Code of Ordinances to add Sections 98-30, 98-31, 98-32, 98-33 to require any, well, you get the picture. I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, 6H. Consider approval of a contract between City of Nacogdoches and Craig's Dirt Work for the Lake Nacogdoches Accessible Walkway Project in the amount not to exceed $109,373. Ms. Sal.
Mayor Council, last item for the day for me. Jessica Sal, Community Services Interim Director. I do want to note there's one typo on here. It's actually Craig's Dirt Service, not Craig's Dirt Work. That was my mistake that I made in multiple spots on this AIS and the PowerPoint. But this item is for a construction contract between City of Nacogdoches and Craig's Dirt Service for a Lake Nacogdoches Accessible Walkway. A few of the project overview notes. We got a list here what this project is, a little bit of background for our council members that weren't here when this project started. This is actually the second time we've bid out the Lake Nacogdoches Walkway. And the first time we opened for bids in April of '23, our project budget was $165,000 and our only bid came in at $339,000, which was much higher than we had money for. So the project was re-scoped and reworked and sent back out to bid beginning in July. We opened these bids August 3rd of 2023 and this time we had again a single bidder, but it was Craig's Dirt Service out of Lindale and the cost was $109,373. So much more inside of our project budget, something we could definitely live with. The project overview, this is to rehabilitate an existing asphalt trail out of Lake Nacogdoches West, extend an eight-foot-wide section of that trail down to our swimming area, extend another area of the trail over to our existing fishing pier and back to a concrete pathway and then all back to the parking lot. So essentially it makes kind of a big accessible loop over at Lake Nacogdoches. And this also includes regrading an eroded slope that we've had a lot of problems with over at the lake. If you look up towards the, towards the hill from the swimming area, you can see it's a lot of red dirt, which is a problem every time it rains, we kind of wash that into our sand as well. So this is regrading that eroded slope and establishing some permanent vegetation that will help us from washing red dirt back into the lake every time. And then the installation of beach sand as well. And I do want to make one note on here. I'm not sure if the way I worded this in the AIS was clear. In the initial bid, it's for that $109,373. The beach sand is not listed as an item in the contract, but with our owner's allowance of $20,000, we should be able to purchase that in here as well. So we didn't line out that we were selecting the beach sand, but we do have the money in that contract to purchase that as well. Here's an existing site plan, which I know is not as easy to see on these tiny little screens we have. But this is our existing site plan. You can see there is somewhat of a trail down to the swimming area. It has a very sharp hook around, which is a little hard to use if you have a mobility device, a stroller, anything like that. Also, our existing trail does not connect all the way to the concrete pathway or to the existing fishing pier. And so we kind of have a area where you have to backtrack if you are using any mobility device, stroller, or anything like that. This is the proposed site plan. We're gonna see we're extending that asphalt trail all the way to the swimming area. We have a little bit bigger loop and turnaround, also connects to the fishing pier, to the concrete pad, and back to the parking lot. So again, this project is with Craig's Dirt Service for $109,373. And we also have Sean Bergen Polk, who are gonna be our construction management on this project because they are engineers and construction experts and I am not. So that is our project. We're very excited to be bringing this to our public because it's been a project that's been in the works for a very long time. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have after public comment.
Okay, we have any public comment? There being none, any discussion?
Glad we got a bid that was reasonable this time.
I am too. I think it's the first time, knock on wood, I've seen something come in that far under budget, so I was pretty excited about it.
Why was it so, so much different, do you think?
A lot of this was because we re-engineered the type of material. We gave some allowances on what type of vegetation could be put in rather than requiring exactly that amount. And then I believe we advertised it a little further out. We tried to, we always try to do as local as possible, but since we didn't get any bidders that were within our budget, we did a lot of advertising this round.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion for approval of a contract between City of Nacogdoches and Craig's. I'll make a motion for approval of the contract between city of Nacogdoches and Craig's.
Dirt Service.
Dirt Service. For Lake Nacogdoches Accessible Waterway Project in the amount not to exceed a hundred and nine thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Last item, item I, consider approval of a resolution. Related to the use of a general obligation bond if approved by the voters of the city of Nacogdoches. For improvements to the city's airport.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Jerry Baker, City Attorney. Here for a a resolution that the council actually requested after our last regular meeting. Uh, you may recall that this was related to Proposition A, which is one of the. General Obligation Bond items that is up for election in the upcoming bond election on November seventh of twenty twenty-three. Uh, Proposition A authorized the issue of general obligation bonds in the principal amount of seven million, three hundred thousand dollars for airport improvements at the city airport. The discussion of the council related to matching funds that the. Uh, the city may receive through grants or other funding sources and how much debt, bond debt, the council will be willing to approve. Uh, in relation to the bonds that may be approved by the accounts of by the city. Uh, residents. And so, um, based on the discussions at that last meeting. Uh, and the request for a resolution to be presented. Uh, you have what's in front of you. This is revolution, uh, resolution number thirteen fifty-two dash zero nine twenty-three. As you can see, uh, under, if you look under section two, really gets to the meat of the resolution. The council will only approve the issuance of such bonds. And levy ad lorem taxes to meet its debt service requirements thereunder in an amount not to exceed a dollar for dollar match. Of any funds the city receives from federal or state grants and other such sources of funding for airport improvements. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Any public comment? Okay, there being none. Okay, Jerry, okay, I I need to make sure I understand this. Okay. The reason that we're doing this is because. In. The. Written bond, we couldn't specify. Subject to. Matching funds.
That's correct.
Okay. So we all knew that coming out of that committee that the, anything to do with the airport was gonna. Gonna be matching funds, so therefore we're doing this resolution.
Correct.
Okay, so. Say if we get. So we would have to, if we use the whole seven point three million dollars, okay. We would have to have matching funds. Of seven point three million dollars.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, what if? We can only get three point five million dollars? Can, can we use three point five million dollars of that seven point three?
That's, that's the intent of the the resolution. So the the council could then approve. Bonds up to that amount because it has matching funds up to that three point five as as you pointed out in that example.
Okay, so if we don't get any matching funds, that no money will be spent on this period, whether it's voted. If it's voted in favor, if we don't have matching funds, we can't use that money.
And it's also contingent of the voters approving the Proposition A.
That's right. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. If it's not approved, then. If it is approved, then we can't spend a dollar of that until we have the matching funds.
That's what the, that's what the policy that the council is putting into place by this resolution.
Okay, all right, okay. I just want to make that clear.
Make a motion that we adopt the resolution related to the use of a general obligation bond. If approved by the voters of the city of Nacogdoches for improvement to the city's airport.
Second.
Is motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, there being none, motion carries. That concludes our meeting for September the nineteenth. Uh, two thousand twenty-three. Have a good evening. God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas. Thank you very much for coming.